September 30th, meeting of the Free Town Lakeville Regional School Committee to order. Could I have the full please, Amy?
Yeah. Robert Noguera.
President.
Robert Clark.
Here.
David Davenport.
Here.
Carolyn Gomes.
Here.
David Goodfellow.
Here.
Michael McHugh.
Here.
David Brown. Brett Kulikovich.
Is anyone recording the meeting other than Lakeville camp? Okay, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the love of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, first part of the agenda is community speaks. I ask you to come up to the podium if you're gonna participate in community speaks. Going once, twice? Okay.
Good evening, Jolene Morris from ASONA. I have a question for the school committee, or maybe the administration could answer the question. It was brought to my attention that this is, this situation is happening at Free Town Elementary. And my question is, why are the kindergarten children at Free Town Elementary who are enrolled in the two and a half hour program not, are excluded, they are excluded from attending specialist classes, mainly art, music, and dance?
Call the principal. Excuse me, that community speaks is for agenda items that the school committee has jurisdiction over. My suggestion to you would be to call the principal at that particular school. She'll be able to get you an answer right away.
Okay. Thank you. There is definitely discrimination against that group of children. And I'd like to say, yeah, they are not receiving the same educational experience as they appears throughout the district.
Again, I suggest you take it up with the principal of the school. Okay? Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Goodfellow.
I was just gonna ask, have you yet, have you recalled the principal?
As just a town person, I didn't think that I could call the principal, since I do not have children attending that school.
Yes, you can.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
That's where the, that's where the answer's probably gonna best come from, so.
Okay. I just thought maybe the school committee might have jurisdiction over curriculum and equality of education throughout the system.
Okay, thank you.
You do not have any concerns about that?
Oh, we do, we definitely have concern, but we gotta let it.
It has to go through the chain of command, and it has to go through the principal first.
Very well, I'll be in touch with her first thing in the morning.
Thank you. Anyone else for community speaks? Once, twice, three times, we have?
On that, on that topic, there was a PowerPoint presentation done for parents enrolling their kids into kindergarten earlier this year. I do have a copy of that resource, and if anybody wants a copy of that, I'm sure it can be obtained through the district. Or if you want to email, email me at my Free Lake account or my personal account, which is all over Facebook and stuff, go right ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It, it's a, it's a PowerPoint that was done for parents on the kindergarten programs, and it might shed some light on some of the, it's, it's not a topic that we're gonna take up for general discussion, but that resource is available, and as well contacting the building principal. But I can send that to you tonight if you'd like, get my email later or something, okay? Right, thank you.
Anyone else for community speaks? Okay, next part of the meeting is, we have a joint meeting with the Lakeville Finance Committee. Get the members in the front row possibly. As well as, we have a representative from the Free Town Finance Committee here, too. Okay, so are you guys ready to go? I'm gonna turn it over to you guys.
Great. Well, thank you all very much, appreciate your time. What we wanted to talk about really was just looking to build a bridge and a free flow of communication through the towns, you have an idea of what we're doing, you know where your budgets stand, and kind of look at forecasting, so we kind of avoid the, shall we say, every kind of last minute running back and forth, trying to figure out what the numbers are, trying to come up with the budgets that get voted, and as we know, I mean, there are obstacles in here, we have timelines set by the state, you're not really sure what the town budgets are gonna be, what all these issues are back and forth, we're solving for a number that's sometimes kind of challenging. And so we wanted to, A, make, discuss probably a more frequent communication through these, we need updates on where we are, the towns, like to do this with Free Town as well, so you know where our budgets stack up, and then look at kind of where we are, we publish a, we get from our town accountant a monthly kind of summary of what expenses are, and where we are on the budget, to build that and to open up that channel of communication for, for you guys, so that we're able to see, are we hitting it, are we coming up short? And then, I think the other thing would be forecasting going forward, who think these budgets are gonna be like. Because I think the selectmen in Lakeville had a very good idea, we talked about it last time, we know that budget piece is gonna increase about two and a half percent a year. If we vote through, that's that proposition two and a half, that's what we can raise the budget if we decide to do that. And when you've got a school budget that outpaces that, it kind of ties our hands. And I know from the Lakeville perspective, we have put off enormous capital improvements, we have backburnered a lot of projects that are really kind of coming to fruition for us, so we're really gonna have to work with you guys, it's really the single biggest budget item. And so we were looking at, you know, more frequent meetings, a little bit more of a reporting perspective, so we could see, and break down what these expenses are, and then to talk to at some point when these budget negotiations come up, you know, we look at what the percentage of that budget actually is, and you know, eighty percent of it, I think, we looked close to eighty percent of them were contractual obligations, and if those are growing at a five and six percent type rate, we just can't keep up with it. And we're just gonna hit this point, but we're gonna continue to have these shortcomings. We've had two overrides that have gone through, I think the likelihood of getting a third is probably pretty minimal, so we just have to find a way to work together, so that, you know, the kids are getting the quality education they deserve, and we're kind of, everybody's coming to the table as, with as much information as they can have to do that job. So I think that's really, really important for us. And then, you know, also talk sometimes about what that E and D budget comes out to, because I know at some point, we've talked to other, you know, officials, where you've got a bank or an account set aside, what that money is, and what that get used, used for towards the end of the year, so there's an understanding, and I think rebuilding trust and really having a comprehensive understanding of where these dollars are going will help everybody, and certainly everybody at these meetings. So we don't come into the budget here, and then realize we've got funding that comes in down here. And I think this is an ongoing process, just not something that we do after the holidays. So those were really the kind of key points we wanted to push out, and again, really stress those contractual negotiations, because again, the steps and levels, as you look out where that is, is disproportionate to where some of the towns are. And this isn't to say this is anti-education, this is anti-teacher, this isn't anti-anything other, we've got a finite amount of resources that are shrinking, and we've got costs over here on the town level that are going up from all these things that we postponed, we just really want to work with you guys, and the school committee, and the teachers, and everybody. But I think it's gotta be a free flow of information, and the ability for us to get more information timely from each other, and we can update where we are, and we can update this on where we are. Because this is not an easy process. Yeah. So my other community members, I don't know if I covered all of our certain points.
I think we'd like to formally request the, we need to see monthly budget reports, also monthly reports on the transfers from the E and D, and also intro reports, transfers from one account to another.
Do you like me to address it? Well, first of all, E and D is, is gonna be, any authorization for us to transfer has to come back to the school committee, so that would, that would happen. Currently, the school committee will be voting to close out this year's budget, and some of that money will go into E and D, and we certainly can make available to you exactly what that figure is, that we have opening this school year or for this school year. Any, any kinds of, of discussions regarding voting to use E and D will happen with the school committee. The school committee did at its last meet, the meeting that you may, may have watched on TV, I think it was our September 5th meeting, where because of class size at Grace, the school committee voted to put back two grade four teachers. Their authorization for funding was that it would come out of E and D, should we need to do that as the year goes, as we go through the year, if we find. You're exactly right, that salary does make up eighty percent of our budget, and those are contractual. So I certainly think that in the next round of negotiations, that's something that would probably be looked at, but those are, those are in essence costs, unless groups agree to reopen that, that is something that, as you know, and I know, have been set, so. We, there are monthly updates, they're probably, probably not as detailed as you would, but we don't come forward with transfer items to our school committee. That's generally periodically, in my past life, we did that in the spring, when we knew that those accounts. We do however, and we have, kept the school committee informed recently about some FY14 budget concerns we have, because the lines are, are not funded appropriately for our actual costs. So we're certainly looking within our budget to be able to cover those, and we hope that that will happen, otherwise we will ask for a transfer from E and D if we find as the year closes. But we're, I'm certainly, you know, my process has always been very open to meet and communicate, and actually, I know we have a meeting established with the Free Town, and would certainly wanna do that with the town administrator and members of the committee, and to, to really get a sense of the fiscal health of the towns. So as, as we take direction from the school committee to build a budget, what type of budget do they want us to build, and what information can we share with the committee members as to what we know already about the fiscal health of each town? So we will do that, but we certainly can make things available to you. We are going to outline a budget process meeting with the chair and the chair of the regional subcommittee, and a timeline, and what that looks like, and we'd get that out to all of your members, once I, if I can get that list, and I'm sure I can, so that you will know about that. But, you know, we're more than happy to provide you with, with what information you need. Yeah, nope, no problems.
Every, excuse me, every report that the Director of Business and Finance gives to the committee is also available on the website, the day of the meeting?
It actually is after, right after your meeting.
Right after the meeting, that, because.
But, you know, it might be easier for them the next day to contact Amy Manzoni, my Ministry of Assistant.
So we can send that over, right.
And do that, usually on a monthly basis. Fred Baker.
I will mention to you also, the auditors just came in today for the first time, and the E and D processes that we have to have our account audited, and then we have to have that approved by the state, which last year happened around the first of January. So in the interim period, even though in fact we have money in E and D, we could not spend that anyway. So there's, there won't be any expenditures prior to that certification sometime, probably in January.
I think just the E and D report came with some baggage historically that we'd like to, I mean, we can't fix what's happened in the past, we wanna fix what, you know, and work together going forward. It's not gonna do any good to look in the rearview mirror.
Right, I agree.
We're gonna march forward and do the best we can with what we have, and that's really the spirit of what we're here with, so we look forward with the injunction on that, and I hope to do this with greater frequency than we have in the past. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brad, do you have anything?
Just with my Lakeville counterpart said, that we do need some more open discussion. And just to reiterate what he said, I mean, when you have contractual agreements that are going at five and six percent, and the most of the, you know, with it's two and a half, that we can go over, you know, two and a half percent, I mean, it's already, it's already felt very hard in Free Town. So I mean, someone's gotta put the brakes on somewhere.
Does anyone from the committee have anything? Thank you very much, we've got a brand new admin team, brand new Director of Finance.
Thank you.
So we're really looking forward to this budget cycle, and I know that, and if you've watched the school committee meetings on television, we're committed to staying, spending within our means of the approved amount at town meeting and not overspending it, so. Mr. Davenport?
I just wanted to throw in there that we, we will get going with some FinCon meetings. We do have to clear up the standing of, the question that are raised about the standing of the committee, which I don't think is a difficult question to clear.
Yeah.
What the definition of a standing committee is, and the way it's different from our policies and our regional agreement. But that aside, we can get some meetings going, and the, the thing about the FinCon that we've talked about for a long time is, it's, I'm hoping that it might evolve into more of a forecasting tool in a committee than what it has been in the past, which is sort of, no disrespect, but the two towns telling each other what terrible shape they're in, and how it's gonna be difficult to help the schools, and we've never been able to, you know, recommend a budget, I mean, we've never done the only specified action of that subcommittee, which is to make a recommendation on the budget. So, you know, that charge of the committee has never been successful, and I, I think that, that committee might need to change its focus, which might require an amendment to the agreement, I'm not really sure, but we have to explore some of those things and see what we can do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay? Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, next on the agenda, Section Five, New Business, Superintendent Search. Mr. Kucha.
Actually, why doesn't he sit right here? It's fine, Glenn.
That'll be the hot seat.
May you want to share these with the members? I have extras as well.
Yep.
What's happening? Oh, sorry. What caused this? Yes, yes, I did get emailed.
Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee, I contacted the district about restarting the search process. Several steps need to be taken in order to get the process going. There are several decisions that the committee may need to make, or items that you might identify that you would like different from before, which is why I'm passing out the brochure that we used last time, and a version of the decision tree that indicates some of the key decisions that need to be made. My recommendation is that if it's possible for a small number of people to meet at some convenient point during the day, to get some of the ground rules straightened out, we can start proceeding with the initial steps that need to be taken. You'll need to decide if you're going to use a search committee, how big that search committee will be, and the search committee will need to get organized. Ideally, you are within range of being able to set the search process up, and solicit your candidates, so that you can begin the interview process shortly after the holidays conclude. And if that, sort of general timeframe is going to work, we can start providing the support to the district as they do that. I'm happy to respond to any questions, but it's just that I needed to remind the committee that time does move more quickly than we might think, and.
Correct.
There are twenty-six districts that are already looking for superintendencies at this time, including some that are very near to this district, so you may wanna get moving pretty quick.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kucha. I know when we as a committee have talked about starting up the search process, a lot of questions were generated, and that's why we asked you here tonight. So at this point, I'm gonna open it up to the committee, so everybody can weigh in with their questions. Mr. Clark?
Well, I know you said there were twenty-six, twenty-six districts, I think you also indicated that some of those might have internal candidates. How would you characterize the pool this year compared to last year or previous years?
Well, the pools are nothing compared to what they were a generation ago. We still have our issues with early retirement and people leaving the field. We have a larger number of people who have less central office experience, we have, now we have middle school and elementary school principals applying for superintendencies, whereas in the past, that would not have been common. So we certainly have seen some good candidates, but in a search, a district is fortunate to find four or five really good top-tier candidates out of a pool of somewhere between fifteen and thirty candidates that might apply.
You've been involved with this last year. What do you see as the main attraction to a superintendent coming to this district compared to some of the other districts?
This is, in terms of the experiences that we had meeting with the faculty and talking to the faculty and the community members, this is a stable faculty. The students have been well-served by the faculty. This is not a district that needs to be recreated and fundamentally rehabilitated, because it's not in that kind of a position. This is a potentially good superintendency for someone to come in and work with communities that think well of the way their students have been served by the public school district. Now, there's always plenty of room for improvement, there are always those who are quick to identify areas of improvement, and there's certainly plenty of room for growth here as well as in other districts. But this is a good superintendency, as superintendencies go, given the kinds of community, the quality of life. You could actually come to this district and, with another adult in the household, buy a home in the area, live here, and be part of the community, and be part of a successful superintendency. The size of the pool is a function of several matters that are the same as they were before. The presence of an internal candidate will limit the size of your pool. The size of the compensation package will affect the number of people who would be willing to make a professionally lateral move, because even those who would move from one superintendency to the other would wanna do it for an increase in compensation. Those factors haven't changed.
All set, Mr. Clark?
Well, I could ask him a lot of questions, but what do you say, what do you say to someone who says that, you know, this, this district serves as a stepping stone for people?
I would say you have the right to expect that this would be a destination superintendency, and that you have the right to inquire of your candidates about whether or not they'll still be here in seven years, and that you have the right to expect a candidate who would stay for a significant period of time, including the final years of a superintendency. That said, there are people who will move from district to district, even though they might not think that five years from now they'd like to work somewhere else. You just can't control the factors that govern morale of your central office team. And remember that you are all turn limited. At any three-year interval, the school committee can change, and the school committee that hires a superintendent may not be the superintendent, may not be the school committee that employs a superintendent, in as little as two to three years. So those factors can come into play. But I don't see any significant external factors, nor do I see any significant factors within the community as creating that kind of disruption.
Glenn, in, in thinking about last year's process, I'll try to speak up.
Please.
Last year's process, the, the search committee, its composition, its size, and the meetings that we had, do you see anything that would necessarily need to be changed, or was out of the norm with, with other communities?
Searches can involve a lot of process, and searches can involve a ton of process. Less process, in my judgment, is always better. A smaller search committee is always better than a larger search committee, as you will recall. Lot of cats to herd, as we say, and it's not unusual that we find, when you gather a search committee, if you have someone from the municipal side joining the search committee, well, there might be permanent conflicts with when the selectmen meet. There might be people who can't meet on weekends, people who have family responsibilities and don't want to, or, or someone who, you know, I'm involved in another group and I can't meet any Tuesday night. Or those people whose job responsibilities make it impossible to meet before a certain time in the evening. And for those people who come in from Boston, driving here from Boston is always a crap shoot, so if you're, you know, coming from work in Boston or someplace that involves traffic, it can be a real problem. So my recommendation to any school committee is a smaller search committee is better than a larger one, and by the way, I say this to everybody, so I'm not referring to Free Town, Lakeville when I say this, but the last thing in the world you want on your search committee are angry union representatives and insecure central office administrators. We find that confidentiality is always a problem. Faculty members historically do check with their counterparts in other districts, so feedback comes back to the search committee that may be based on the relationship of the candidate to the, to the bargaining unit, which is problematic. And my experience has been that if there's any element of insecurity, people on the search committee who might be affected by the selection of the next boss will not want to take risks with someone whom they feel is a threat. Now, I say that everywhere I talk to school committees, so I'm not necessarily referring to Free Town and Lakeville, but I am telling you that as you compose your search committee, you need to think about that.
Thanks. I'd like to just offer up to the committee that Glenn's comments about a smaller committee are probably, you know, certainly to be considered. I just wanted to throw in there, my question was more about what our group was like last year, and I don't remember that we ever had any problems scheduling or getting together. We never, we never had to cancel a meeting for lack of quorum or anything like that. And, you know, it, it'll be a little bit difficult to step back from having the community involved and having a smaller group for reasons that didn't exist last time, you know, such as the herding cats, or, you know, lack of being able to get people together, because that didn't exist last time.
Okay.
Just point of information, I don't think we, you didn't require a quorum for a search committee?
I think you do.
I don't think you do.
I thought we did.
Because you're meeting in executive session?
Yeah.
Well, if you're not in executive, we just had some general meetings where they were, you weren't in executive session.
We had a training session.
Going over, going over resumes.
That was in public, but, yeah, that, no, these are all posted meetings of the superintendent search committee, they're all posted.
That's not the training session.
They're all subject to open meeting law.
Okay, anyone else?
One of the comments that was brought up the last time we were discussing this was whether to use the school committee only as the search committee, or to broaden out and bring, do you see any difference in rates of success when you have a group that consists only of school committee or of a broader group?
There, there is a problem in that the school committee is not allowed to use a confidential screening process during the interview period. Now, frankly, when the open meeting law was redrafted, we thought the language of the law would have provided that privilege to the school committee, but the Attorney General has opined otherwise, and she is in control of interpreting the open meeting law. Perhaps at some point, a judge will, will deal with that. But you won't get candidates if everyone is subject to public review at the very beginning. In many cases, people want to apply in confidence, because if they apply in confidence and they're screened out by the search committee, then their confidentiality is protected. They only become publicly known if they become finalists. And I've said this many times in public, it's no great shame to be a finalist for your superintendency and not get the job, but it's no great. your superintendency and not get the job, but it's no great honor either. And superintendent candidates really don't, often do not want to risk being the finalist who wasn't hired. So, you certainly don't want to be the semi-finalist who wasn't moved forward. And a cer, but, a, a search committee may have a sub-majority of the school committee on it, so four of you could conceivably serve on the search committee and still have the rights to confidentiality. And I am one of those people who believes that it is important for the school committee to be represented on the search committee. I think that for, to have members of the search committee who can advise the search committee on what the school committee is thinking can be very helpful. And I also generally recommend that whoever is the chair of the school committee serve on the search committee and serve as its chair. That's my personal bias, but a lot of school committees do it very differently, so expedite matters quickly.
Anybody else from the, go ahead.
Let's go with the personal bias. You've had a lot of successful committees. Do you have any recommendation on a size?
Well.
Composition and size. My apologies for being late to everyone.
Nine is, nine works.
Nine?
Eleven works, not as well. Thirteen works even less well. Anything over that size becomes unworkable. Group of seven is better than nine, and it can be very efficient, but there are constituencies within your district whom you might want to be represented. Certainly, parents are concerned because they would like as meaningful an input as the faculty. The faculty definitely wants to drive the process that selects its next boss. I can tell you that, not because I have any special insight into Free Town, Lakeville, but that's the way it is everywhere. And in some cases, the faculty almost demands to be the hiring authority, based on the fact that we're in the schools every day, we're in the classroom every day, we know more about what the school needs than others, and, and we hear that. So, I, I would suggest, nothing bigger than nine would be ideal, but whatever, if this is the school committee's search, and whatever the school committee decides, we work very hard to make it work.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, at this point, would anybody like to propose how we do the search? And can we at least get a vote to get the process started again?
All right, so.
Expand on that.
Yeah.
Well, I would like to know what the committee is feeling, so we can, my goal would be to give Mr. Kucha some clarification and for us to get some clarification out there on what the other committee members are thinking, what do we want to do for the search process? Do we want to just set up a subcommittee with four school committee members on it to do the initial first round, and then the rest of the school committee takes over? Who do we want to put on the search committee? That sort of thing.
Do we have the breakdown of our, I'm trying to write down the breakdown of our committee from last year. It was four school committee.
It was four school committee.
A member from each town select board.
Select board.
Yep. A member from each town finance.
Was it fin, FinCom?
Was it one from each FinCom?
I think so.
I think it was.
Who was, who was on?
Parent from each town.
Yep, parent.
Teacher reps.
Student.
That's right. That's the odd number, because we had thirteen.
Yeah.
It's unworkable, to me, it's too much, I think.
Mr. Brown?
I just, I've been on several of these search committees, and you're right, more is not better. I mean, I don't know how you could knock that down, you guys did it last time, I'm new here again this time, but I just can remember that nights would drag on with nothing getting done, because it's just too much going on, too many, too many thoughts, I think. I think maybe less representative to, could bring it back to the school committee just as, just as well. I mean, I just don't know how to cut it down. I mean, I know you want to represent parents, teachers, you know, FinCom, I mean, I'm not sure how to break it down, but already, just real quick, you're up to thirteen, just what you guys just said, and you didn't mention students, I heard somebody say students, so you're, you're talking fifteen, fifteen people right now. Listen, whatever the committee would like is what we will, we will do, but I just, from past experience, it's way too much. Nothing good gets done, it becomes late-night meetings. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Mike?
I think one of the comments that was made at the last meeting was to try and maintain it as being primarily a school committee decision, not without other input, but without being outnumbered by other input. My inclination would be to have a committee of seven with four school committee and three, however else it be composed, but just not to get any larger than that, so that you maintain that the majority of the search committee is members of the school committee. Just a comment.
Mr. Cluck?
I would ask Mr. Kucha, you saw the numbers seven and nine as being probably optimal numbers, in your experience, who, who serves on those seven and nine number search committees?
On a, on a nine-member school committee, you might have two or three members of the school committee, two or three members of the faculty, two or three parents, occasionally a representative of municipal government joins in one form or another. Sometimes a member of the senior citizen community who provides experience and wisdom, often retired teacher. But for a nine-member committee.
That's eleven.
Well, but for a nine-member committee, you probably would want three members of the school committee, and then maybe three citizens at large, and three members of the faculty.
I think part of the problem is you're, you're wrestling with public perception that everybody, you want to involve everybody, but at the same time you want to expedite the process if you can, so it's a kind of a catch-22. I have no problem with a small number to get things done.
Carolyn?
I'd like to propose four school committee members, two parents, one from each town, two boards of selectmen, one from each town, and the interim superintendent for a total of nine.
Okay. Are you doing that as a motion, or?
Get out of my head. My head also, I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
It would be four school committee members, two parents, one from each town, two boards of selectmen, one from each town, and the interim superintendent.
Okay, discussion on the motion. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
I still think, you know, teachers need to have involvement. I mean, I'm not sure of that, but I'm not sure how you would go from there. I mean, I almost think, I mean, listen, I know the school committee is important, I almost think if you wanted to cut something out, you got two school committees here, you could have one from each town on the school committee if you wanted to add teachers, I mean, that's just.
We have one school committee.
Not sure you want to do that, you may want more representative, representation on the school board, I don't know.
Before you go, I'm just going to say that a board of selectmen member, once, not too long ago, once said to me, we're a full region now, you guys run in both towns, the school committee represents both towns, why do we have to have this diversity between the two towns? You know, everything we do, it's always a member from both towns. You know what I'm saying? If we're truly a region, truly one area, and I know we're all representing all the children of Free Town, Lakeville, then, you know, this stuff of having two towns, I don't think is really, in my opinion, is necessary anymore. Just my two cents. Mr. Davenport?
I hear that, and at the same time, we're a four-and-four committee, right, from two towns, so I mean, why don't we just put, put eight positions up between the two towns and, and have it a free-for-all and, and see how it sorts out? With the rate that people pull papers in Free Town, we'd be eight people Lakeville pretty, pretty quickly, but, sorry. But at any rate, my, my difficulty is that as a group, I, I thought the group was successful last year bringing forward candidates. We all know how things went from there, no need to, no need to plow that field again. But, I, I'm with, I'm with David, I think there needs to be some, some involvement from the faculty. Last year we had Anne St. Pierre for Director of Student Services, we had Paula Money, who was a faculty rep and union rep, we had Stacy Soto as a building principal. Do we serve all of those masters? Do we get all those groups in? I don't know, but those, that was the, you know, those were some of the folks we had from faculty and admin last year, as well as our interim superintendent at the time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Goodfellow, do you want to weigh in?
Mike, I seconded the motion, that was my suggestion.
Okay. All right, anybody else? No one once, twice, three times?
Oh, four times?
Four? All right, Mr. Cluck called a question, so I'll call for a vote.
Never mind.
All those in favor of?
Can we hear it one more time, please?
The motion is to have four school committee members.
Two members of the, of the community, one from each town.
Two parent, two members of the community, one from each town, two members of the select board, one would be from each town, and our current interim superintendent serve on the search committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I'll abstain.
Any abstentions? Dave Brown?
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, now for part two. How do we, we have to appoint people to this committee?
Right.
I will look for volunteers from the school committee. If anybody really wants to serve on it, I don't necessarily have to chair it.
Participated in one before, I wouldn't mind doing it again.
Okay, so we have Mr. Davenport?
Free Town, two Free Town, two Lakeville, right there. Perfect.
Yep. Okay. Do you want to be on it, Mr. Brown?
I'd rather see you on it. Time constraints, yep.
Okay.
I'd, I'd move that you chair.
All right.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion and a second for that? No.
No, actually, under the, under the policies of the, of the subcommittee, you're looking for volunteers, you'll appoint as well as the chair.
All right.
So it's all your appointment, under our policies.
All right, so, do I need a motion for that?
No, well, you, I guess we, just going back to the school committee policies. Right, you appoint the subcommittee and its chair.
Okay.
Okay, so it's nice to ask for volunteers, what you got?
All right.
If I were you, I wouldn't do it differently than what you just heard.
Okay.
But it's technically within your purview to do so, so.
Thank you. Are you okay with that, Mr. Cluck? All right. Okay, so I move to appoint myself as the chair with Mr. Davenport and Mr. Kulikovich and Mr. McHugh from, as the four school committee members.
The interim superintendent.
The interim superintendent.
Then you'll have to call the town.
And we'll have to get word, Amy, out to the two boards of selectmen from each town that we would like a representative, and then, how do we want to handle the selection of the parent?
I think what we did last year was that we, we asked for people to, to write.
Send something to the central office.
To write letters of interest.
Generally, once you get your timeline or dates, then people at least know how to commit, so particularly parents who might want to serve, so you might want to let them be aware of it, but then get your dates set as soon as possible.
And, so they'd be sent to central office, addressed to you, and you would make the appointment of the citizens.
All righty, so with that in mind, when do we want to have the first meeting with Mr. Kucha?
Well, I would suggest the first thing that would happen would be an informal meeting with the superintendent to identify some of the key decisions that you're going to need to make. You might also solicit from your colleagues any proposed changes they might want to make, if they want to make any to this, this document, other than the ones that are no longer timely. And we should have that meeting sooner rather than later, so that we can get a set of proposals back to everybody to review, and we can schedule a proposed organizational meeting for the search committee, a timeline, and put the process in place.
Okay, do we want to get some dates documented?
Sure. What we'll do, though, if we could ask maybe the school committee members to review this, so that we can make some changes or updates, a particular note, at least in my eyes, as a candidate may be, the salary and contract, and your timeline for your process, which is something that, if you're going to stick to something like this, I think that's critical, so we can get that out, and people can be aware of that, and then, I think we can probably massage any of the changes here, Glenn, particularly around administration and staff, but, and budget numbers, and that would be just fine-tuning that, and, and the changes on the committee and that kind of information.
Okay.
Do you have this electronically, you can send?
I do, we have it electronic.
Send to Amy, we can do that.
Do you have it electronic? We can certainly send it to you.
Yeah. We can get, get it sent electronically, then we can make some changes, you know, that we know of.
Do we want to try to meet next week, or?
Sure. Do you think we're going to have, though, are you looking to meet with the entire committee? Search committee, because I, I think you won't have.
Just an informal.
Yeah, but you won't have everyone yet.
You won't have everybody.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, it's going to take time to get commitments from the boards, and also for our parents.
All right.
So.
But in the meantime, you can do some of the preliminary consensus building around non-controversial issues.
Okay, so, school committee members that are on the committee, actually, the whole school committee, any changes you want to see on this?
Yeah, I think timelines is critical for comments and anything else on this, that we can get that date, you know. As soon as we can get timelines and salary and some of the other information, we can correct simply that it's changed, it would be critical, I think, are the two keys.
We probably want to talk about that some piece of time, and we can just.
Right.
Anyone who wants to be part of that is welcome to. It's a ministerial meeting, meaning it's, it's dealing with technical editorial stuff, so anybody who wants to join in is welcome to do so.
All right, this is all new to me, so.
I think one of your discussions was, did you want to follow the same timeline as what you had, which basically starts the process, you know, with application deadlines in mid, mid-November, and then finishes the process for appointment in February, and with a start date somewhere around July 1st. So if that's still the rough timeline, then we can work backwards and try to put some dates in place, that are close to that.
I don't know that we actually hold on to this timeline.
Okay.
No, we didn't.
We lost, we lost time getting organized, so this wasn't realistic, but we can adapt it, do that quickly.
Okay, Mr. Davenport?
I have, I have a question about the, the subcommittee. Is there anything that prevents us from having non-voting members on this committee that wouldn't count for quorum?
Because we're going into executive session, I believe, yes.
Is that for sure, or is that?
The, the committee can invite into the room anyone it wants at its discretion, along with the requisite risks that come with it, it's, it's up to the committee majority rules. But it is a legally confidential meeting, even though that often doesn't mean anything to some people.
Okay.
I'm not suggesting it would be a problem here, but it has been in other districts. In fact, as was said the last time, the search committee was, the search committee was, was fine, and, and the processes were, were quite well-run, and the meetings were expeditious. And if people were not able to make it, they simply excused themselves from deliberating on the candidates whom they were not present to see, so it was very, it was very easy.
Okay, thank you.
That being the case, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we add at our discretion, one faculty member to the committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion?
In a voting or non-voting capacity?
Uh, one in a non-voting capacity. So, non-voting, and also would not count for quorum, so the concern for trying to get people together is not changed.
Do you have, do you have someone in mind, or a position in mind?
No, I don't, I don't have any in mind. I just put out the number one to be conservative and not, not like to be successful. I mean, if somebody wants to amend it to two, or, or something along those lines, by all means.
I just think, and I agree with David, that he's just trying to have some kind of teacher representation there. I just don't want to have them feel that they're shut out of the process. I think that's what he's trying to, to do, and that may accomplish that.
I'm trying to serve both sides of this issue, the size versus representation.
Okay, and how, how would that person be determined?
By the chair of the commi-
By the chair.
By the chair of the school committee. He appoints the subcommittee.
Or maybe, yeah, the, the chair would, you know, if there's an interested party, it would be up to the chair of that committee.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Anyone else for discussion on the motion? I'm going to call for a vote then.
All right, all right, well, okay.
No, go ahead.
I, I just think that, you know, we did, you know, we did discuss this a minute ago, and we did just take a vote on the composition of the committee.
Correct.
And I would, you know, and I certainly do understand Mr. Davenport's point and Mr. Brown's point, but, you know, the reason why I supported the first motion that was passed this evening is because I, that's what I believe the composition to be. I mean, then we go back and take another look at it and take another vote, and, you know, anyway, you know, if you didn't, if you weren't on the prevailing side of that, you just go and see if we can add stuff and add stuff and add stuff to it. I mean, that would have been part of the conversation a minute ago. That's my point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Go ahead, look, I'll go.
I'm in agreement with, uh, Mr. Goodfall. I mean, you're going to start to see it creeping up and up and up. Now somebody, we're going to be at thirteen again.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not necessarily against adding, um, adding an educator of, of some sort. My, my question or concern would be more, more as to the voting rights and any potential hard feelings. You're being asked to be on the committee, um, on the subcommittee aft, after the fact, and you're being asked, but you're not being given the, the rights of, of one of the members, a full member. So that would be my only, that would be my only concern.
Okay, anyone else?
The, the point of my motion is that, is that we can't have it all. I mean, I, I did say my piece during discussion. I didn't, uh, I didn't look for an amended motion or, or anything along those lines. I, I agree, maybe I should have done, done it a different way, but I, I wasn't, even at that stage, looking for additional voting members. I do see the, I, I do see the point of trying to keep that number low, but I also don't want to give up on an opportunity to have some faculty input. It strikes me as odd that we went through this process last time. I don't believe that that initial stage and that that selection process was our problem last time. And yet, we're, we're winnowing out certain groups, and I, I believe that our faculty is a key group in this process, and they're going to be unrepresented. So, you know, your vote is your vote, but, um, they're not going to affect quorum, so the concept of trying to put together meetings and, and the difficulties associated with that will not be affected. They're also not going to vote. I, I understand, I understand Carolyn's point on that, but it's, it's a way to broaden the tent a little bit, but not, not upset the apple cart with some of these other concerns about committee size. So if you want to go forward and just shut them out, that's fine by me.
Okay, anyone else?
The only question I would have is, if you're going to open it up to having a faculty non-voting member, if one of the building principals were interested, would they be able to apply as a faculty non-voting, or have you now included a teacher and shut out the administrators on the same? Just kind of doing a devil's advocate thing in my head.
I'd be welcome to an amended motion, and I'm, I'm really, I'm just, I'm just looking to get somebody from, an educator involved.
Brett?
Faculty or their representatives?
Is that, were you asking for that to be amended?
Yeah, that way-
I'll accept that amendment.
With Carolyn's point about somebody feeling bad about being on that committee but not attending the voting, like, I mean, who's to say now, what about, what about a principal? What, what about me? Why, shouldn't I be on the committee? Or what about another, I don't know, town official? Shouldn't I be on the committee? I just, it just opens it up to even more, even more problems, I think.
I would just suggest that we also keep in mind that this group isn't selecting the superintendent. This group is selecting whom will be considered as finalists. And so there will be lots of opportunity from, for input from every stakeholder, or every group, um, as to, you know, whom, whom they would like to see as their superintendent. So it's not that this group is selecting the superintendent. This group is selecting the finalists. And so we, it's not like we're not going to hear from these other groups that have interest. We definitely will. It just won't be in the beginning of the process.
Mr. Davenport, you have anything new to add?
But it's undeniable that this is a very important stage of the whole search process. And, uh, you know, as far as the idea that this is going to creep and grow and grow, I've offered a motion. We can vote on it. The only way that it's going to creep any further is if somebody grabs onto that and makes their own motion and repeats the process again. So this is, this is a unique thing. Vote it up or down, and we, and we move on. I'm just, I'm just asking for a small bit of representation, um, on the educator side of the equation. It's not going to creep unless somebody else comes up with yet another motion. So with that, why don't we just call the question and, and get done?
All right. I'm going to call for a vote then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
I'm opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, motion fails.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kucher.
Thank you. I'll be in touch with the central office.
Okay, so I would, um, ask that parents who are interested in serving on the committee contact, uh, central office. There'll be something on the website for it, how to apply.
We can send out a one call. We can send out a one call.
Okay.
Parents this week.
All right, great. And then, um, once we have all the, the committee members on the committee, well, we'll have to have a school committee mem, meeting before then to appoint them, right?
No.
No, I can just appoint them without a school committee meeting.
We want to have a cutoff date for when those letters come address. Can you tell me if you need electronically, including all these documents?
Do the end of next week.
And I'll just send them to you, so you won't transcribe them.
The cutoff date will be the end of, will be next Friday, close of, uh, business. Except for the select boards, because I don't know when they're, um, meeting next. Thank you, Mr. Kucher.
And a happy federal fiscal new year to all of you.
Yay!
Thanks. Our money is still flowing, isn't it?
Just remember, if the government shuts down, nobody at the United States Department of Education will be allowed to write regulations.
Oh, that was a help. No new ones.
One can only hope.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item B, appointment of Dr. Nash to Reed's collaborative.
Board of directors.
Board of directors.
Move to, move to, move to a point.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. On to another hot topic of the evening, the educational model, um, discussion. And there's an enclosure with it. And the thought with this was, um, that we bring this back up again for discussion now that we're a full region, because there has been a lot of, um, talk about class sizes at the three, um, pre-K to five schools. We only have technically two K to fives. Let me rephrase that. We only have two K to three, well, one K to three school, and then a one to three school. But anyways, there was talk about, is there a better way to share resources among the district? And is this one way that we can do at, do it? So I asked for this to be put on the agenda, um, because I know some committee members had suggested maybe now is the time that we start talking about moving, uh, Lakeville students to Free Town and Free Town students to Lakeville and vice versa. So this may be a, um, another option to do this. So at this point, I'm going to, um, open it up to the committee for discussion on this, and, um, we'll get some input from the superintendent as well. So, Mr. McHugh?
I'm just, having read this PowerPoint the other day, and when the education model subcommittee was meeting a few years ago, I didn't have the benefit of the availability to go to the meeting. So this was new to see, and these slides appear to just confirm the opinion I had formed on my own, that, that it would be incredibly valuable to give heavy consideration toward moving to three elementary schools, as opposed to two elementary schools and an intermediate school. It, it seems to be a more educationally sound direction to move in.
Other committee members?
I was just going to say, I remember, although not being on the, on the subcommittee, I remember hearing, um, many benefits, um, to all of it, is, as well as some potential cost savings. I, I believe if, if we may be able to go to a two-tiered bus system as opposed to a three-tier, and I'm not, I'm not sure, just, I just recall from, from, from looking into something like that. So I, I think, I think it would, would be giving the, the whole issue some due diligence.
Mr. Davenport, I believe you chaired that committee. You were co-chair of that committee?
I believe it was Will Sinkowitz, wasn't it?
I think it was Will Sinkowitz.
Oh, all right.
I hope I wasn't, because I don't remember.
I hope so, yeah. That was only two years ago.
You chaired a lot of the subcommittees, so.
I think it was Will.
Yeah, it was, it was Will. The, um, the three K five model, we didn't, we didn't really crunch numbers, because the, um, the group decided very early on not to, not to take on budget considerations. Generally speaking, it was our understanding through John McCarthy that, that that three-school model would, would be more expensive. There was some thoughts that the two-tier busing would recoup some of that. However, more recently, we've had our, we've had our bus company tell us that a two-tier, a two-tier bus move wouldn't really net us much savings. In fact, they, Ken has said it could be slightly more expensive.
Really?
Not, you know, so, um, the, I mean, the, the group tried to steer clear of budget considerations, and I think the conclusion was the three K to fives. Obviously, the district didn't go with that, because we are where we are today. Other things that were talked about, whether or not we did that, was whether or not we could place students geographically and redistrict to even out, which is an issue we faced a little bit this year, potentially. And, um, if we do try to go to a three K five model, the grace amendment is still sitting out there as a hurdle that we're going to have to get over, at least until the bonds are paid off. Because the, the, the numbers of kids from Free Town and Lakeville in that school might not, might not satisfy the, you know, what's in that grace amendment about what each town has for an enrollment capacity in that school. There were some of those issues to, to try to go through. No?
No, I'm, I'm just thinking that, remembering that whole grace agreement issue, is that the fact is that the town is guaranteed, um, I think Free Town's guaranteed 110 seats in that building or something, but we don't have to exercise to fully utilize those seats, is my understanding. I thought it was the other way. I thought it was Lakeville that was guaranteed the amount of seats.
No, we, we were guaranteed an amount equal to our enrollment. I think it was in October of 2001.
Yeah.
And if we went over that, we had to pay per student.
Correct.
But if we remained under that, we did not incur a liability.
Right. I think it's 100, I think the number's 109, but I might be, might be wrong. And over 109, Free Town is going to pay per student.
Okay, yeah.
Where Lakeville has, um, in that agreement, I believe, 150 spots are pretty much the balance of the capacity of the school. So for Lakeville, there really isn't a question of additional cost, but there is for Free Town.
Okay. But we're in that boat right now, because Free Town's, uh, fourth grade is there as well.
Correct.
Yeah, so we're already-
Correct, you're already over.
Okay, anybody else from the committee? Dr. Nash?
What would you like me to say?
Well, what's your-
He just asked me to tackle and be on a, a board for the superintendent's search, which I think is, uh, is extremely important, and certainly, I think, to the new administrative team and to the faculty, important. You know, one doesn't necessarily argue what, I think, was found here. The question is the timing and the wisdom of doing this with everything else that's out there, you know, being very honest with you, to do it well. I think the chat, there are many challenges, you know, the transition. I can think of, you know, a parent who has a student who would love to be able to finish out in one school, and now we're telling them they're moving. So you really have to do a lot of homework on that. I certainly think we can look at, uh, geographically, you know, how that changes boundaries. You're always going to be locked in by the number of classrooms that you have in each building. So the reality is that if you utilize FES, it probably has more classrooms than, than Grace. So you're always going to have an equity issue. I think the reason you tackle something like this is, is it educationally sound? Do students have less transitions? Can teachers communicate better when we send information? We don't need to worry as much, you know, all of those kinds of things. The concern I have is just really, to do it well, the amount of time it's going to take to do it, and to think, you know, that it can be done in, in a short period of time with everything else. That's my real concern, and with the budget, as, which I think is critical. That's my overall concern that I have from my perspective. I don't disagree that I think it should be probably looked at. I don't disagree from a personal perspective with the philosophy that K-five schools are better. Research tends to show that, and, but I, I think there's a lot to doing this and doing it well, and that's my concern, that I may not have the time to do all of that, you know, if you want something ready to implement next year. I, you know, certainly am the interim superintendent, and I recognize that there are a lot of challenges that we need to overcome first, that might take up more priority. But I'm willing to tackle whatever the committee is, is asking me to do.
How soon, if the school committee felt that this was the direction to go in the fall of 2014, in order to do the FY15 budget reflecting that, how soon would we need to make a decision that you would have, you know, we, obviously, we don't want to decide in February, oh, by the way, we're going to move everything all around, two months of budget is gone.
That's, that's hard for me to answer. If you're thinking from the perspective of what savings you might have in busing, I think you could get that quickly, uh, in a relatively, um, short period of time. If you are looking to see how geographically you're, because in essence, as I understand, what you're asking me to do is to look at redistricting, too.
Yeah.
So I think that presents the larger challenge, as well as, of course, the population shift, both in students and also staff. I mean, there's a lot of pieces of this. So some can be done more quickly. I think doing it all in the midst of a budget and trying to totally understand the implications for cost is one of the things I struggle with.
Bring in a new superintendent, bring in a new superintendent as well.
Yeah, new superintendent.
Well, um, my thought would be, could we at least find out if, from the busing point of view, if there would be a cost savings? And then, is it possible for the district to give us just a rough ballpark of what the enrollment in the three schools would look like, or is my asking for way too much? Going by where the kids live currently?
I certainly think we can, I can ask the bus, uh, company if they could give us an estimate of what it would look like, and if, if there were any cost savings. And geographically, uh, what the proposal might be on their end, and what, and we certainly can share that, I mean, and what that looks like for current students.
Okay.
And probably get- You know, and, and probably get numbers as to how many, uh, students would be displaced from their current buildings if we were to make that move. I mean, I think some of that, uh, we can probably get and.
Yeah, maybe a little bit at a time, just to start compiling numbers and see what it's gonna start looking.
Just like a rough idea, so we can see.
Also be aware that I believe your contract is up this year for the bus company, so.
We have the option to renew for two years.
We have an option, or to go out to bid also. Uh, so that just as an FY, more as an FYI.
A factor on the transportation is that transportation is reimbursed at a fairly high percentage, so, you know, you're, you, if there is a dollar savings, you gotta look at the net and not, because the reimbursement will go down once you spend less.
All right, isn't, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
Isn't there something to do with you get more reimbursement if you're a region?
You do, and we will get that either way.
We get that either way, okay.
The issue is, as, as our, um.
Only regions get reimbursed.
Yeah, as our cost goes down, our reimbursement will go down.
So, we've already done that, we're already regionalized, so that's already, that's what we already got, okay.
So, if there would be a cost savings, it gets mitigated somewhat by the fact that, you know, we get reimbursed for regional transportation, so that goes down too.
Carolyn?
I was just gonna ask, um, I, I know it's very important for us to be fiscally responsible, but I was also gonna ask if, if we could be reminded, just a, a quick fact sheet of, of the pros of, of, of doing this, because I re, I remember there being a lot of different reasons given to us, the educational benefits, and, and being on the school committee, although we're looking for, to be fin, fiscally responsible, I also think that, me personally, I would be looking at more of the educational benefits to the students.
You have, you have some of them, I know already, in here.
Right.
With longer grade spans and, um, smaller school size, and again, I, I wasn't part of that committee, but I'm sure that less transitions, what the research says about that, so. My hunch is that they would be the same, that they wouldn't change that much, we would be saying the same thing. Uh, and I think whether or not we can better balance our, uh, class sizes, would, a lot of it is going to be dependent on what the, the actual busing looks like, because it may end up not looking as well as we think, I don't know, geographically.
Um, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, I, I thought that one, or, or part of why this came up was our prior discussions about class sizes.
Correct.
You know, we had 26 in a lot of sections in Assawamset, and then over in Freetown, we had sections with, uh, 2021, and we were looking at that disparity. And, you know, we're, we're talking about going to a completely different education model, but I thought we were also talking about whether or not we might look at some redistricting as a way to even out those class sizes and, and work with that, with that disparity, not necessarily, you know, completely going to a different model. Is that not something that we're, we're gonna be talking about now, or?
It's really what the will of the committee wants to do, so.
Well, I think that that would, absolutely, I think that absolutely have to be part of the conversation, because you're not just gonna take a, you know, a, just a single concept and run with it. I mean, I, I think that, you know, you definitely have to, you know, in, in this whole fact-finding process, I think that you can definitely, you know, pull your numbers away from that research and say, you know, if we had a, a, um, a shift from one school to another, what would that look like? What, what types of numbers of people are we looking at? Um, you know, and what, what would be the, you know, what would be the impact? You know, what are the educational impacts, and certainly, you know, do you phase it in? Do you start with a kindergartner, or do you move someone from, to a different school? That's gotta be, you know, something that we need to talk about, get input on, and.
We're not gonna be able to do this for 2014.
Right, yeah, no, I, I'd say absolutely not, but, um, I think that you gotta look at all your models, look at what you have, look at how, how you're using what you have now. How can you change what you have now to better suit your needs and better suit the needs of the students, most importantly, of course? And then, what type of changes would you propose from that? So, that would be my opinion on that.
Okay, so do we want to, um, at this point, give the superintendent some, um, direction of what we're looking for? I, myself, I was thinking about what Mr. Brown had said, that we start out small, we're just having the superintendent look at the busing. So, and then we'll just start getting, we'll just start accumulating information slowly.
Start accumulating data and figure out, yeah.
So, are you looking for me to look at K five, three K five schools initially, and see what that would look like geographically, as well as student pop, obviously, student population?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we can get that from busing.
Yeah, because, correct.
We should be able to get that from Kenny, right?
Yes, yes.
He's got that fancy dancy software.
Yeah.
Versa train.
Well, if we're doing some fact-finding on this, is there any way to find out if any schools in Massachusetts have done a similar transition, and what their problems were, and what their, what their payoff was?
I can put it out in the listserv, superintendent's listserv.
Okay.
That's a good idea, very good idea. Why reinvent the wheel?
Exactly. I'm gonna close discussion on that and turn it over to our interim superintendent for old business.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to the business manager, because as you know, we need to, um, vote to close out the FY, um, or FY13, um, budget.
Closing the books for FY13, um, there are some significant events, you know, some that are basically just bookkeeping. Uh, the significant events are that, uh, doing this, um, as I think I mentioned to you before, uh, we were able to prepay 80,000 in copier leases, and we were able to, um, move 200,000 to Circuit Breaker. Now, both of these are critical, given the, the tightness of our present budget. If we weren't able to move the 200,000 to Circuit Breaker, there's, there's no way we would get by the special ed tuition account for this present year. Um, so, those are really the things that are significant in here. A number of other things happened, and that's that all of the smaller accounts have to be closed at the end of the year. So, there's a lot of grants that, you know, were $12 shot, or $15 over, or, you know, lots of events like that, and we essentially had to close them. Uh, the net of all of this is that we started the year with a E and D balance of 787 for 11. And this will leave the E and D balance of 903, 907. Interestingly enough, if you look at the E and D balance in the six prior years, uh, three of the years were higher than the 903, 907, and three were lower. The average for the prior six years is 864, 666. So, we're pretty much in line with where we have been in the past. We are actually carrying only about half of what we are allowed by law to carry. So, we have slightly above the average, although our budget has certainly, you know, been minimally higher most, most of the prior years. I mean, it's moved up to be minimally higher than it's been in the past. So, from that perspective, um, there's certainly nothing unusual about this, it's, uh, very similar to what it's been in the past. I'd be glad to try to answer any specific questions you might have.
Anybody from the committee? Okay, I will, um, need a motion from the committee to approve E and D, undesignated general fund transactions for fiscal 2013 as presented. Okay, have a motion and a second. Okay, any discussion on the motion? And keep in mind, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Baker, but we cannot touch E and D until the state certifies it.
Correct, yeah, the auditors are in now, and they'll prepare everything, and we will submit to the state, and it requires their certification.
Okay. All right. Anybody from the committee? Okay, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye. Aye. Posed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
All right, how's the archaeological, archaeological dig going?
Going well, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda would be, uh, Director of Student Reports to the committee. Dr. Nash?
Sure. Um, as the committee was where Christine Smith is here this, uh, at this meeting, uh, was unavailable at our last meeting, and as we gave you some updates at the last meeting from principals, I wanted to make sure, and the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, wanted to make sure that you got an update, uh, around our special education programs and staffing, and also some of the, uh, budget concerns, of which some that we have shared with you, but some of the budget concerns that we have currently in special ed. Christine?
Thank you, Dr. Nash. Um, we, as we looked at staffing, and IEPs came through over the summer, and we were considering students' needs, we were, um, it was necessary to increase some positions or refund some positions that had been previously, um, removed from the budget. We, we reinstated five and a half paraprofessionals due directly to direct service of IEPs that were unfunded. We reinstated the behavior program at the middle school. We created a behavior program at Grace, um, to address some move-in students and to create the strand of services, a continuum of services for students throughout the district. We do not currently have, um, such classroom at the elementary level. Um, and at this point, I, after a needs assessment done over the summer, don't feel that we need to create one at this time. Um, the students at the youngest levels are having their needs met in the classroom at this time. We did look closely at the sped teachers at Grace and determined that we had an abundance of teachers there, where we made some shifts, and we saw a need for an additional teacher at the high school, um, and that's, and that additional Grace teacher became the, um, teacher for the behavior strand, or for the, the program strand. We additionally needed to create two full-time bus driver positions. Um, we were unable to fill positions as they're advertised as part-time positions, so we increased those two positions, two positions to full-time, and have been able to, um, avoid using vendor services for, I would say, the majority of our services. We, at one point, we, since, since September, we had to only vendor out one, um, such service. Concerns going forward, as we look at the budget, as we, as we engaged in this, um, process of July and August, um, and getting to know what we had inherited, um, we are seeing that the budgets for tuitions have been underfunded by $100,000. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, contracted services are underfunded for $100,000. Those are the services where we, um, need a teacher for, for, um, a teacher of the visually impaired, or teacher of the deaf, or, um, additional services, related service providers that we don't staff through our contract. That's what that line represents. Um, out-of-district tuitions are underfunded by, um, 663,000 dollars. We don't, at this point, have a legal budget in sped, which is quite concerning. So, um, when I'm in conference with our attorneys, or currently, um, there's a, a hearing motion out for, um, a student, and there's, there's not a line item for our here, for our legal budget. And in addition to that, we don't have any secure placements, we don't have any placeholders in our out-of-district budget for our students that may move into the districts, or students that are currently under evaluation, and may need additional services that we can't meet in the, in the district. Any questions?
This might be a question as much for Fred and the superintendent as anybody else, but, um.
Thank you.
A 660,000 dollar miss, by my math, is, is 50% on what was budgeted, so that's a major miss.
Mm-hmm.
And ever since I got into this game, I've always been hearing that sped is very volatile.
Mm-hmm.
But that seems to be well beyond.
Sure.
You know, volatility, so is, is there any way we can get some further detail or analysis on how that happened?
Yeah, let, let me explain a little bit further, because, um, in building last year's budget, it appears that a very conscious effort was made to apply the Circuit Breaker account. That's certainly a legal thing to do, because they knew that approximately 400 would come forward. So, you know, while most school districts would not do that, because they would like to keep some in there for unanticipated students, um, it appears they built the budget with that assumption. So, the 400-plus was sort of counted on. Now, that's, you know, using all you have in the year that you're getting it, is a little bit risky, because the state doesn't always fund at the level it's supposed to. We do then have the other money that, we carried about 100,000 in Circuit Breaker into this year, and we just transferred, as you can see, and the book's closing, the 200,000, um, from last year. So, barring anything unforeseen, you know, we can cover this year, but then we're gonna land up with very little going forward for next year. And while we will get Circuit Breaker again next year, it's clearly gonna cause us to have to budget at a significantly higher level next year.
So, if I could follow up, you had actual costs, you knew the number of students, this is, um, these are sped tuitions, so you knew that. You knew the number of students, and you knew the costs. And only when it's unanticipated where a collaborative might be going up a bit. So, you knew that you had approximately 1,959,000 dollars for FY for this coming year in tuitions. That didn't change. As Fred indicated, um, they consciously planned to use all of the Circuit Breaker money, the 422,000, to offset that. Um, that left you with a million, five, three, and some change, and, and the real number that's in the budget is a million, three. So, it was short funded by 200,000, using all of your Circuit Breaker. Unless we can do something to bring the out-of-district cost down, you can, and with some students who might be exiting because of age, you can look at the fact that you are starting next year at a million, nine, you had a budget this year at a million, three, real number in it, you used all of Circuit Breaker. So, going forward, you're looking at a very different budget, you're looking at a, you're looking at, that you've gotta build a budget with that in it unless something changes. Having said that, recognize also that we shared with you that we had IEPs out of compliance, that the individuals that we put back in, some of those costs were not in your budget. We were able to reassign two sped teachers from Grace to fill two of those, but we recalled a sped teacher for the behavior program that we needed at the middle school, and we needed to add back paraprofessionals, because IEPs were not being met. Those were, those were not in your budget. So, those going forward, unless things change, are gonna be in your budget. All right? In addition, uh, one of the factors that always, uh, has some play around tuitions and, uh, out-of-district placement, is whether or not, uh, you are looking to try to mitigate those by, um, taking some kinds of, moving forward with some legal. You have no line item at all for sped legal. So, um, the issue was that they couldn't even do that, because they didn't have a line item, so that, you know, one thing kind of plays off of the other. Uh, and we have no additional, uh, play, if, if we have anyone this year who has to go out of district, then we would need to look somewhere to get that money, because there are no placeholder tuitions. And sometimes what you do is you use your Circuit Breaker to offset that, but we have used all of our Circuit Breaker and above and beyond that. My concern moving forward is building the FY15 budget, because I now have real costs, and unless those costs change, I have no Circuit Breaker that I, at this point, can begin to apply. I need to look at that for something else for next year, and I, and I need to make sure that the budget is, includes this funding, so.
As a, as a follow-up, have you looked in your archaeological finance capacity, whether or not, um, using Cir, Circuit Breaker in that way had been past practice also, or was that a unique feature of this year's budget?
Um, this is a, there has been Circuit Breaker applied every year, as it's supposed to be. I mean, that's the reason you get the reimbursement, to, to, to offset the high cost of tuition.
Right.
Uh, this is a greater extent than what it's been in the past, so it's not a matter if it hasn't been done, it has been done. It's been done virtually every year, but this is. It's been done virtually every year. But this is, you usually try to apply less than all of it. So you carry some forward for the kind of problems Dr. Nash had described or unforeseen kinds of
So you're rolling over FY fourteen to fifteen because circuit breaker allows you to roll over last year to the next year. So we don't have FY fourteen to roll over to FY fifteen. That's what I'm saying. So as I build this year's budget, I can't say to you, we're going to apply FY fourteen circuit breaker to our FY fifteen budget. I don't have that because we've used it all at this point. In addition to what we've had to take as a result of what was put in the budget.
In kind of simple answer to your question, it's the extent, not the fact that, I mean, it is the past practice, but the extent is greater.
Could we get a little more detail on that?
What?
I'd, I'd like to get a sense of how it was different because we don't want to go through this again.
Well, we can't build a budget that way. We wouldn't be able to do that because we don't
We don't have the money.
We don't have the money to do it. So the problem is, we now have a real number that, that we're now looking at before we even begin to look at anything else for FY fifteen. And I'm looking at approximately six hundred thousand dollars that I now have to build into the FY fifteen budget, period. If these tuitions stay the same or more students are added, then that will go up. But that number is as real as the students who are attached to those slots, those different slots.
And we're kind of caught into the vicious cycle of to try to offset that six hundred, we have to use the money we anticipate we get next year. It'll be substantially less than the six hundred, obviously.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah. So you will hear us say that when we talk about, you know, the townspeople and the gentlemen who were here talking about, you know, communication. Well, if we say level services and level funded, just to do a level services budget before we even talk about contractual of that, this has an enormous impact.
Anyone else? Carolyn?
Just like to thank you for your thorough report. It greatly appreciated and I'm sure it hasn't been easy since you've
We, no, we're, you know, we've worked, you know, Chris has worked really hard in making sure that IEPs are met. And that's the number one thing. We, whenever we've sat and had discussion, I think we've said to Fred, we're sending him twitching, quite frankly, because we're always going to him to say, we have to add this, we need to do this. The nice part is, we were able to sit with our principal and look at staffing. And I had a conversation with the union president to say, you know, we can do involuntary transfers and get programs going. Programs that you create have the potential to keep some students, not all, in district. And so the fact that we were able to reinstate a program, even though it was a new staff rehire at middle school, has potential down the road. If you don't have it, you can't ever have any discussions about why students should stay in district. Not all students can stay in district. We know that. But where we can put programs in place, it makes sense. And you heard Chris talk about there wasn't a need right now to look at potentially a program at an elementary school, but it could be in the future. So as we start to look at that.
Anyone else from the committee?
We've never had a, to my knowledge, we've never had a sped legal line. It's not that it was not funded, it's that it didn't exist, correct? Because legal just always came off of central office legal. So what's the benefit? My next question is
Because your, your, your central office legal is, is not enough to pay for both, quite frankly. So typically, school districts have separated them out. One, because in some instances, you're dealing with two separate legal councils, one who has a sped background and one who, who is dealing with your, you know, your general, who is the school committee and, school committee's lawyer. But it's not atypical for school districts to have two line items, one for sped legal, one for gen ed. As long as I felt gen ed was large enough or general, it, it wouldn't be a problem. But I can tell you based on what you have, I don't think it will be.
So appropriately funding that legal line
Absolutely. You could, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, right, right.
And it might be a good way for us to keep tabs on the actual sped cost, including legal.
Oh, actually, you know,
My point is, if you wanted to litigate some of these, you haven't had the ability to really do that unless you went back and to potentially save some money in the long run.
Anyone else from the committee?
Thank you very much for the very thorough report and thank you, Fred, for the archaeology report. We're going to have to get you an Indiana Jones hat.
Okay.
All right, coming up next, Dr. Nash.
Technology update. You had asked that I bring back the director of technology to give you an update on where we are in the infrastructure. Craig and I have been meeting and will be meeting on October the tenth with the executive ad council to look at the next step after infrastructure, which is really hardware. And you'll be hearing back from us, I'm sure, as part of the budget process for that. So turn it over to Craig.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nash. And thank you, school community member, for having me tonight. And what I'm going to do is, oh, a quick presentation here to sort of get everything warmed up here. And I'm going to give you an update on where we are with our technology.
So you have the Citrix, then? Probably the only one who knows what that is.
No, I, I know now. I've had a good education.
So there's three of us.
Just briefly, I have a presentation here, but just briefly, let me talk about what I'm using here. This is my proposal for a workstation that takes advantage of the technology project. This is called, what's called a Citrix receiver. Speaking of members, as you can all see, this device on the back is what I'm talking about here. The keyboard, the mouse, the monitor, it's just something we had in inventory. It's not new or anything like that. But this is what we're talking about. We could bring to the desktop to take advantage of our Citrix Zen app applications here. This is an example of it. I'm just waiting for my open office to open here. You've got to be a little patient. And I'm just going to give you, my presentation is going to give you a overview of the technology project. And I just want to remind everybody where we started with that. And if everybody remembers attending my presentation, that gives you the overview of our anytime, anywhere learning. I just wanted to remind everybody of this slide. I think many people have seen this in my past presentations. This is our concept of anytime, anywhere learning. And the genesis of this tech project was because we had some old equipment that failed about a year ago. And we decided at the time, we should really invest in the backend of all of our equipment. Update our wide area network on the top left there. Provide wireless access for um device. Anybody at the school community meeting tonight, if you have a wireless device, there's three different ways you can connect to our wireless access here, depending on your superior level. And the thin client virtualization is going to be really what I'm talking about tonight. That's what's changed since I last presented in the school community. That, that part of this project has moved forward. If anybody was involved in any of the construction or building projects we've had here, we're probably at the ninety percent stage of our project. We're almost complete. There's other things here. I won't talk about that right now. But what I wanted to talk about is a new addition since I last presented. We brought the wire, excuse me, bought the wireless here to all the schools. We've built a Blade server environment. That just happened in the last month. And what that means is, we're trying to collapse all our twenty-six servers that we've had out of all the different schools and bring them into a, a data center here on campus. And we've, we've actually spun up some servers to serve the district here. We have what's called the domain controllers. Bob will know what I'm talking about with that. They handle logins. When people log into a computer in our district here, that's what handles that. We actually have collapsed the data for our student information system. Our Reddicker's admin plus now is running on a single server here on campus and all five schools are serviced by that. That was actually driven more by a requirement to be CIF compliant. CIF means Student Interoperability Framework, so that you get a standard database. Eventually, the state's going to come and connect to our servers and grab our student data automatically. So we're setting up for that. The SAN is a server area, I mean, a storage area network that we've developed that works hand in hand with the Blade servers. And we basically are trying to handle all the data stored by all our students and all our staff. Right now, we're sitting at probably seven or eight terabytes worth of data. This system brings us about forty terabytes of storage. I anticipate that will probably grow in the next few years. We bought a system that we can expand pretty, pretty easily with that. Citrix Zen app is kind of the core to all this. This is what I talked about by that virtualization of that thin client. So this is the piece of software that really is the center of anytime, anywhere learning. So that any device, whether it's my phone, this computer with the box in the back, a Surface, a laptop, a PC, you name it. We can install a little Citrix client on that device. And they will be able to get to what you saw when I first started up here, that desktop. And I'll go over that just at the end of this presentation. I'll show you a quick overview of what that desktop's all about. So that's really the center of it. And that's really going to lead to your ability for staff and students to connect to our cloud here, our private cloud, and get their data, their applications, any resource that we can offer. And it's all controlled by our servers here. And that's really the center of everything. We've also added a network management piece. I know we installed the network back in February, the actual devices. But we actually spun up another Blade server and we're running HP's, HP Procur's network management. So we can actually see all our network devices out there from one location. So that's new since we last met. And then Veeam backup, Veeam is actually a brand name of a software file backup system. So we're implementing that right now. We actually have, I'll talk about that in the still to come. But yeah, we have the main core of it set up here on campus, I mean, at this building, actually. And we're going to be, if you look over real quick, the Veeam co-locate site is going to be over at the middle school. So what we do is we say, we want to replicate our data. We don't want to just have it in one physical location. We want to have it here. And we're also going to put a location at the middle school. If this building, for whatever reason, we had a fire in the head and room or anything like that, we would have a backup of all our data in an off-site location. So let me just jump to that one. The big thing happening, and in fact, it's happening this week. Jim Rollins, my network administrator, and I are attending train, actually, they're coming here for training for us Tuesday, Thursday and Friday of this week. We're going to learn about all these things we've been, we've been dealing with here, everything that has been solved, the Blade servers, the SAN, the Citrix Zen app, network management. All that training is going to start this week. We anticipate more of that. So we really haven't closed out the contract with HUB yet. We still have those services that they need to provide to us. They need to get the Veeam co-located over at the middle school and physically set up. That desktop you saw, I just had a few apps there. They're, they're on tap to add more apps as we build our network here. I spoke to Dr. Nash just last week about piloting Zen app in, in the staff area, maybe even some students. So we have that to look forward to where we're going to actually start thinking how we can apply this technology and get the most bang for the buck out of the classroom. Moving the data to the SAN, again, that's a storage area network that we have set up. We still have our data that teachers store and students store out on different servers. That's the next step. We need to bring it all together and bring it over to the new SAN. Then we need to do, set up our new data archiving system. We archive data. It's a state requirement. It's actually a federal requirement that we archive seven years' worth of data. So we're still working on that piece and we're still building that up and getting, getting that running. So let me just really quick back to, this is just an example of our Citrix Zen app. So this would be very typical of what somebody would see if they had a Citrix client running on their device and they wanted to log into our network here. And these are just some of the apps I've added to my desktop. Over here, you have what's called a, an application store. And so these would be a bunch of the different apps that I could choose. You can see the ones that are checked are the ones I have on my desktop. The other ones are there available for me. I haven't put them on my desktop yet. I believe we just got the new Budget Sense Administration link there. So I can add that to my desktop and you'll see it there. And for anybody who uses Budget Sense, you'll recognize the login. You'll pop right up to that. A little security on it so nobody can get in. So I log into there and I get to the Budget Sense. So it's simple as that. What we're going to do is build up that app store so that staff and students will have applications to choose from based on what their, their needs are. So for example, math at the high school would have certain very specific applications. And we would push out the just teachers in the math department and students in the math classes. So we can tailor it to that level. This is just an example of some of the apps we, we've put on here, open offices. We're going to kind of standardize on that. I have some things like my remote desktop and my command prompt that I use as a tech guy that, you know, not, not everybody will have that. A lot of the application choices are based on, we tie it to what's called Active Directory. Active Directory manages when you log in, what rights you have to do the certain things. So we'll tie that to that. So a math teacher will get certain apps. An English teacher will get certain apps. So that's basically a quick overview. I didn't want to go too long tonight. I know I'm tired from the Patriots game last night and everything. So I didn't want to go too long. But I want to open it up for questions. Like I said, we're ninety, ninety-plus percent through the project. We haven't finalized it with HUB technology yet as far as the last payment. We're holding that off. We need the training. We need some things cleaned up with the Veeam and the Zen app and things like that. So we're really close. And I can open it up to questions that anybody has about the project.
Anybody?
Are you meeting like Dr. Nash? Oh, go ahead.
One thing I think that came up at our last meeting, both on the committee and in the audience, was a little bit more definition on the role of the technology coaches.
We're going to have that at a later time, at a later meeting.
Can I speak to?
Sure.
Go ahead.
I can speak to that a little bit. I was involved in the search and recommendation committee for hiring the technical or curriculum integration specialist. Natalie Dunning, the assistant superintendent for teaching and learning, and I, along with Carol Holton and Chris Kenworthy from the middle school, administrative secretary, sat on that committee. We had fifty-plus applicants for the positions. We invited twenty-four or so, about two dozen, for interviews. We had twelve who actually agreed to an interview. And we had ten that showed up. So we interviewed ten people this past week. We had five interviews Monday night. We had three interviews Tuesday night. And we had three interviews, let's see, two, two interviews Wednesday night and then Thursday night. We've made some recommendations. I'm not sure Natalie has brought that forward yet. We had some great candidates of the ten that were there. Wide-ranging. We concentrated on curriculum first. We thought that was more important than actually the technology. It's great to put a computer in a room, but you need to know what you're going to do with it. So we concentrated on the curriculum side of that process. We looked for people who had both education and background, you know, experience in the curriculum integration side, working with curriculum writing teams, actually being able to analyze the needs of different departments at different levels, whether it's the math department at the high school or, or a level at the elementary school. Very interesting candidates, you know, a wide range, like I said. Everyone had some technology, but we're really concentrating on the curriculum side of it and what their expertise was of that. That's where we are, right? And Dr. Dunning will be bringing forward some names to Dr. Nash here shortly. And we move forward with that process.
I think, I think the question referring to was more, how are you going to deploy them? How are they going to be used once, once they're onboard?
Well, they will, as, as the job title and the, and the description basically leads to is that they will be working with the staff to first analyze curriculum and look at how we're teaching things in the different areas of our school. And then they'll say, in my expert opinion, how can I apply technology to improve student learning in that area? So we're not going to make them building-based. We're going to make them more curriculum-based. And, you know, they may work one time with a high school and, you know, they may work one time with a high school's teacher. They may work another time with an elementary group. We're going to be providing professional development where we can with teachers to, to help them. One of the things we didn't want was somebody could fix computers. We have that already. We don't need that, right? We really need them to concentrate on how can a teacher gain advantage in delivering education using our technology tools? That's really the focus of what that position is.
Thank you.
Generally speaking, the timeline, this year was going to be that training phase, and then next year was going to be more the full rollout. Realizing that we were several months late in doing our installation, not your fault at all, just the way the override went. How do you feel about the overall timeline and where we'll be next fall?
You mean as far as bringing like Citrix Zen app to the staff?
Staff and students?
I mean, we're, we're, what we're, what we're going to do now is, once Jim and I get trained this week, we're going to start piloting, figuring out how we can pilot this with various teacher groups. So we would work with some staff members at all the schools and say, okay. In fact, even if you have a regular desktop PC right now, you can connect to this. You don't need a special device, you know, anything like that. One of the things actually we're, we're thinking about is actually having some of the secretaries at the outlying elementary schools use this to connect back to campus and get better access to our, our systems that are running back here. So that's what impact will have right away. The thing about the training on it is it's relatively simple. What you do is when you log into this and you get it all set up, your computer's all a blank desktop, and you'll click on this plus button, and you'll have all your apps that are available to you. You drag them onto your desktop, and you're all set up. This is basically, what you're looking at is a server that's running in our room back here. And everything, when they connect to this, they're running a server back here. There's nothing really, there's no horsepower involved in this device at all. So to speak to the training, you know, we're, we, we started this back in, what, February or before that, when we asked the, you know, when we got all the buttons up. So we're really only sitting about seven months out. In my experience, the size of this project, we're pretty much on schedule based on that time. We had some work done in February. We had a bunch of work done over the summer. We've had some work here ramped up in the month of September. We're 90%, 90, 95% complete at this point. Jim and I will get trained first, and then we'll spread that out with my tech staff. We'll start with that. We hired these technical integration specialists. They'll help us with the training on this. And the first thing we would like to train is this Citrix Zen app, how, how teachers can leverage this to really help in the classroom.
Well, on behalf of the committee, we'd like to thank you very much, you and Jim, for your hard work this summer. We know you put in a lot of hours and a lot of extra time, and it is greatly appreciated. And thank you for moving the project forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a meeting recap, community comments, welcome, on any agenda item that we discussed tonight. Going once, twice, three times. Okay? Other business that may properly come before the committee? Don't think we have any. So with that, I need a motion to enter into executive session for reason number three, to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation of a public body, and if the chair so declares, then I declare.
Move.
And not to reconvene?
And not to return to open sessions. Okay. That is a roll call vote.
Robert Noguera?
Yes.
Dave Davenport?
Yes.
Charlie Goode?
Brett Kulakovich?
Yes.
Michael LeCue?
Yes.
David Giffalo?
Yes.
Robert Clark?
Yes.
And David Brown?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go in the conference room.